My name is Gabe Alguernos and I have the distinct privilege and honor of serving as president of the Montgomery County Council this year. And we are here for our annual meeting with MML, which we look forward to every year and so appreciate the relationship that has been built over many years. And there's some great news, of course, to report this year with some longstanding issues that this council in particular has worked hard to address, thanks to the leadership of MML. But let me just say a couple of things upfront before turning it over to our colleagues in MML. And that is that, of course, the county executive released his budget on Tuesday, as he does every year. And we look forward to hearing your feedback regarding those items. The other thing too is several of my colleagues, unfortunately, are not going to be able to join us tonight because of either family or other commitments that they could not get a hold just out of. And I, full disclosure, have to leave around 7:15. My father-in-law is a member of an Irish society and is being recognized this evening and given an award. And so our family's getting together to recognize him. So when I leave, we're going to be in great, very capable hands, as my colleague and friend, Councilmember Katz, will take over the chairing of this meeting on behalf of the council. But why don't my colleagues from the council introduce themselves? And then I'll turn it over to my colleagues in MML. Councilmember Katz?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I am Sidney Katz. I am the District 3 Montgomery County Councilmember. And many of you might remember, I'm a former mayor and former president of the state, as well as, I think I was president of the chapter four years in a row. So anyhow, it's great to be with you all again. And it's only took 35 years for us to be so happy on this whole situation. Thanks.
You got a really nice watch, for those of you that don't know, for those four years of service. So whoever's next should expect that. Councilmember Juwondo, I know that you are traveling, but if you're in a position to introduce yourself.
I am, and I'll be on screen in about 10 minutes. But good to see everybody. I'm Councilmember Will Juwondo, at-large member. And thank you for all the work that all of our great municipalities do. And look forward to getting a watch like Sidney one day, hopefully, if that does exist.
That's right. That's exactly right. Great, and Happy St. Patrick's Day, everyone. I guess I'll turn it over to my colleagues in MML. Oh, Councilmember Reamer is on the phone, it appears. But Hans, can you introduce yourself really quick? Nope, he's double, doing double duty. He'll be back on in just a second. So I believe, Ms. Ashton, I'm turning it over to you to make some remarks on behalf of MML. And then we can get into the Q and A and whatever you all would like to discuss this evening.
Absolutely. First, I definitely want to just start out the meeting with a huge thank you and a cheer. You are the historic council who has helped us to resolve a three-decade, I'm told, plus, you know, issue that we've had. And we are extremely appreciative that you took our concerns seriously. You took our taxpayers seriously. And you sign both the expedited bill 222, as well as the supplemental appropriation for FY22. So I just wanted to start out with a huge thank you. I know oftentimes our meeting confers have focused on this topic. And I think today we can signal that it's a time to chart a new path forward. I think that the collaboration with the council, the county executive and county staff has been quite remarkable, sometimes in challenging times. Through COVID, we have become closer. So I wanted to acknowledge the relationship and the support and collaboration with our municipalities to me has been like no other. And I've seen it grow throughout time. And so I know that you all worked very hard and were champions for municipalities. And there was a unanimous vote. So I wanted to just quickly say, we thank you, we appreciate you, and we look forward to working together. With that said, I, just because this is such a big moment, I did want to just allow some of my colleagues to say thank you as well. And what this means to us, because I don't want to minimize how big of a deal this is for municipalities, our taxpayers, but most importantly, for the services that we are now going to be able to provide to our residents because of the action you took. So I'm going to turn it to Shayna, because I know you've been a part of this for a very long time. And then if anyone else wants to speak, please raise your hand.
Thank you. Hi, everyone, good evening. Yes, I just want to echo Monique's comments about our appreciation. This has been a long time coming. I have been with the village for over 20 years now. My predecessor commented at the time about the need for resolution on this. And he served on the prior task force on tax duplication. This effort outlived him. He's no longer with us. And unfortunately, there are many people who worked on this initiative over many years. But I think what really made this year very special, not only that we reached resolution, but we really reached a compromise position that benefits both municipalities and the counties. And I think both the municipalities and the county were willing to meet in the middle on some points. There were some things that each side had to let go. And I think it's important for us to continue to recognize that, that there were certainly some things that were left on the cutting room floor. And that's okay. That's what happens in a negotiation and that's what happens in a compromised position. So thank you again very much to the council for your efforts. Certainly want to acknowledge the efforts of county executive staff as well, getting down into the weeds on the language of the bill. But we really do appreciate being able to say that we had unanimous support from the council in bringing this to conclusion. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Newton, are you there and want to share a few words?
Sure. Thanks, Monique, and hello, everybody. Happy St. Patrick's Day to all of you, whether you wear green or orange. And we wear orange in this family, but it's a happy day. And I want to echo what Shayna said, because it is a compromise. And as somebody who did also work on this a while ago, I've been on the Reckless City Council since 2009. I think we all stand on the shoulders of those who came before us. This has been a long process and it finally took it to this year with Monique and the rest of the board's leadership to really get it done. So I want to say thank you to all of you. It is a great, great event to finally have this behind us and we can move forward and work on other things together. We've shown that the county council and municipal leaders can all work together. So I just want to say thank you to everybody who made this happen. So thanks.
All right. Anyone else have a few remarks? Ryan?
Nice of you to call on me, Madam President. No, I don't have any remarks. I'll just echo everything that's already been said.
Excellent. All right. Well, thank you. This is very different than where we were a year ago. So I wanted to also just take some time to see if we might hear from you all on some of the priorities and things that you are very excited about pushing forward this year. And let me just...
Well, I would be happy to sort of step in and give you a 30,000-foot overview of the council's agenda for the upcoming year with some of the hot-button issues that we've been discussing and which we know many of you have weighed in on, on a myriad of different subjects. I'll start with Thrive, because that has understandably generated a great deal of correspondence and interest, in particular from municipalities. And of course, as all of you know, this is an update to the county's general plan, which hasn't been updated since the early 1980s. So it was time for us to take a look at holistic view of the county's planning, especially over the next 30 years, recognizing how much things have changed. I really want to acknowledge and thank our Fed Committee, led by Chairman Reamer, and of course, Councilmember Juwondo is a member of. And I also want to say that Councilmember Fritzen unfortunately was not able to join us tonight because of an unavoidable conflict. But his chief of staff, Cindy Gibson, is on. And Andrew often touts how proud he is of the fact that he has the most number of municipalities in his district than any of us. Of course, I'm at large, so I'll just say. But among our district colleagues, he has the most amount of municipalities in his district. And he wishes he could be here this evening. But there, of course, were nine sessions led by our Fed Committee. And there are very passionate views on this issue from all sides. And while the Planning Department did their best to engage the public, particularly within the midst of the pandemic, it became clear to us, as we went through this process, that there were too many people that had woken up and were not aware that this process had been undertaken. And this is too important for us to rush through. And so through the racial equity analysis that was recently done, a determination was made that we needed to hit the pause button temporarily to be able to hear more voices, particularly those residents in the corridors who live in the garden apartments, who may be the most impacted by some of the decisions that are being made. And we're hearing different views with regards to how this will impact attainable housing. And so we are going to hire a consultant. We have already issued the RFP for that. And the goal is to solicit feedback by July 1st. And that feedback will be the final component that we need in order for us to be able to re-engage the work sessions on this really important issue. The majority of my colleagues have gone on record committing to moving Thrive forward through this council. But there remain a number of outstanding issues. Just speaking for myself personally, one of the issues that I believe needs a little bit more attention is within the area flooding and infrastructure, because flooding has become a huge issue. And Council Vice President Glass recently asked for an analysis of this. There were 39 floods in Montgomery County last year alone. And so in due, in large part to climate change, that's not going to change. And so we have to think about that and the infrastructure issues. That's one of many issues that we're going to have to tackle as we work through Thrive. But we will commence our work sessions once again after we receive the formal recommendations through the racial equity analysis. And that will be this summer. The second issue that we are processing right now, which I'm sure all of you are as well, is the move of the primary date. I, as the former director of the Recreation Department, my mind immediately went to summer camps. Oh, my God, what are we going to do? Because 11 of our recreation facilities serve as early voting centers. And I know in Gaithersburg and several other municipalities, your facilities do as well. And that will end up displacing hundreds, thousands of kids and families at a time where they need these summer camps the most. And of course, we're concerned about the impact on voter turnout as well. So we'd love to engage in discussions with all of you about how to problem solve and troubleshoot and get the word out among all of our residents that there has been a change and make sure that we don't have what happened in 2014, which was one of the lowest voter turnouts we've had in the history of a primary in Montgomery County. Let's strive for 2018, which was one of the highest voter turnouts we've had in the history of Montgomery County. We don't want to disenfranchise voters and we would love to work with all of you on that. The two other issues I'll highlight for you all this evening and then turn it over to my colleagues to see if they'd like to highlight anything as well is, of course, the county executive released his budget, as he always does, and someday she will, on March 15th. And the budget is an aggressive budget, I'll say, that attempts to address a number of the legitimate issues that we have before us, particularly in the area of our social safety net. And as Chair of the Health and Human Services Department, I was actually quite pleased that there were some pretty significant investments, both within HHS, but also our nonprofit partners, which we know partner with our municipalities as well. So there was a lot of good stuff in the budget. But the budget is starting to come into focus. And as every budget, it will have its own share of challenges. The county executive did take $20 million from OPEB. And it does appear that some of the federal funding that is, of course, has an expiration date, was utilized to fund some of these program expansions, which there is some concern early on of the sustainability of that. And so, and of course, our school system has come in with a record number over maintenance of effort, which the county executive did not recommend fully funding. And so we have ongoing conversations with our colleagues in MCPS about that very issue. So there will be a lot of moving parts. And as always, your voice and your perspective is deeply important to us. And so please feel free to reach out through our respective offices, through your respective district council members, through our central office. And of course, as always, we encourage you to sign up to testify and your constituents as well, because those matter. And we have gone back in person recently, but we are continuing to provide many different options for people to testify. And I don't know about you guys, we actually had a record number of people testify before the council these last two years, many of which asking for language interpretation, which like totally warmed my heart. This is great for our democracy and it's something that we want to continue to encourage. And the final thing, I said two things, and I meant three, because I've got two more. The second to last thing I want to mention that has been very much a focus and we're hearing a lot about is crime, which is unfortunately on the rise. And while the council has been aggressive in working with local law enforcement, but also doing our best to address the underlying issues that are contributing to the rise in crime, we're doing it in an environment where we want to address these issues, which are real and deeply impacting quality of life for our residents, but also be respectful and honoring the fact that this council has also been very aggressive in police reform, in meeting this moment of the racial injustices that have happened in our criminal justice system that have been there for generations. This council has been very aggressive in helping to address, to increase transparency, to increase accountability, and to help ensure that all of our residents feel that they are being policed in the same way, respectfully and with authenticity. So I think we can achieve both that of making sure that everyone feels safe and respected while also addressing these growing crime issues. And the county executive did include in his budget recommendations a significant increase in the funding for our Montgomery County Police Department, a 10% increase, the largest increase we've seen in a long time. And related to that is, of course, the Police Accountability Bill, which we know impacts our municipalities, especially those municipalities with law enforcement. We have methodically gone through this process and per the recommendation of Councilmember Katz, have made sure that a resident of a municipality serves on the Police Advisory Board in the charter. Because we recognize that it can't be a cookie cutter approach, that each municipal law enforcement department has its own sense of policies and procedures, size, scope, what you're responsible for. And so we want to be cognizant of that and make sure that we don't create more problems than we're trying to solve through this Police Accountability Board. And there's been great collaboration. And I think we're getting close to be able to vote this out of the full council. And our goal is to vote this out by March 29th, to give the executive the opportunity to recruit and move forward names that the council will then approve. And as is always the case, if you have qualified and strong candidates, constituents within your municipalities, please encourage them to apply, because we need really good people to apply for these positions. And the final thing I'll mention for now is in the area of economic development, which very much crosses over our council to you all, because we are on the same team. I've been very impressed with what I've been reading in terms of the municipal efforts to establish very powerful public-private partnerships, recognizing that county government can't do these things by itself, and recognizing that we have to have a strong relationship with our private sector and our developers in order for us to be able to move forward, while also not giving away the farm. And so, you know, it's a constant balance, but it is clear. And we did receive some interesting information from the Council of Governments in a presentation on Tuesday, which if you didn't see it, I encourage you to check it out. It's available online. They provided a phenomenal analysis of our region as a whole in the recovery since the pandemic, housing, economic development, transportation. There were some really interesting data points that absolutely correspond to your all's work. So that's something that you all should take a look at, if you have time. But we are very much open for business. And we are very aggressively trying to court businesses and trying to identify opportunities. And I, once again, give a lot of credit to our Fed Committee, who's done a lot of really heavy lifting here. And Councilmember Katz, who during his tenure as council president, did a really great job in working with the county executive to do some listening tours. Many of the recommendations that were made in those listening tours have actually been implemented. And so we're in a better place than we were before, but we have to keep, I would say, our foot on the gas, but I don't want to spend five bucks a gallon, so I won't use that analogy. We got to keep pushing forward in order to take advantage of the opportunities and assets we have before us. So that's a broad scope. And then for myself personally, as council president, I have two big priorities this year. And one is in the area of public health. And we're announcing a special appropriation today, on Tuesday, to expand our mobile medical practices in Montgomery County, to meet patients more where they are. We also want to expand telehealth and telemedicine and close the digital divide so that people can actually access those opportunities, just as some examples. And then the second is in the area of food security. And I'm working closely with Councilmember Juwondo on an effort to, with all of my colleagues' support, end childhood hunger here in Montgomery County over the next three years, which we think we can achieve and we're very excited about. So I've talked enough. I will now defer to colleagues to see what they would like to highlight and some of the things that they are working on. And again, I'm leaving in about 20 minutes, so I'm going to turn the mic over to Councilmember Katz. But why don't we start with Councilmember Katz? And then go to Councilmember Reamer and then Councilmember Juwondo. And I'm doing this just in the order I see you all on the screen, guys. So, and then to provide updates on things they're working on. And, but, but before turning over to Councilmember Katz, again, I spoke a lot. Did anybody have any questions regarding those issues? Sorry about that, because since I have to leave in a little bit.
This is Monique Ashton. First of all, I wanted to say I've worked on this background for you all, just to say thank you. It says, "The council that makes history." So I'll take it down, but I wanted to just really emphasize that. And I appreciate you coming here tonight, even if you have to leave early. And thank you, Councilmember Katz, for taking over. I do have a question. Flood planning is something that we have seen a need for in this past year. You know, when we look at climate change, you have to look at the impacts of that. And so we have, I know that you all are working very hard to not only look at prevention, but also look at mitigation issues. And flood planning is a big part of that. How can our municipalities be engaged? Because some of us are doing our own flood planning issue, you know, issue management as well, even though our borders sometimes, the properties may be right on the edge of our jurisdictions. And so the way we work together will be very important on that front.
So that's a really good question, Councilmember Ashton, because it is complicated. You've got three county executive branch agencies that all play a role in addressing the flooding issue. And that, of course, doesn't include the utilities or the state, because oftentimes the utilities are buried underneath and go through state highways. And, and so, but I'll give you a specific example. So I live in Chevy Chase View, which is in Kensington, which is, of course, a municipality. I'm proud to say that. And our, one of my neighbors had a very chronic flooding issue on their block. And they organized a meeting with our town council and our town manager and did a walking tour. And they invited me and I then invited the corresponding county executive branch agencies. And it was very effective to create a time and place for us to, you know, not set up a meeting, but to physically be in the location where there are chronic issues, just kind of open things up a little bit and spawn, I thought, a pretty healthy discussion that led to some concrete follow-up steps with our town and the executive branch partners. So I wish I could say it was easy for us to look at this holistically across the board, but it's not. It's going to have to be done on a case-by-case basis. And I think that's a good model, is if we follow up and individually set up a meeting and a walking tour of one of those chronic areas where there are significant issues, a good example of a problem, in real time, we can problem solve and you can ask questions of the executive branch agencies that will send representatives there. And I think that would be one way of, piece by piece, seeing what we can do to address this. But I don't know if my colleagues have any other thoughts on that.
Hi, everyone, it's Hans. Great to see you. And great comments from our council president about everything we're working on. Yeah, there is an OLO study underway about stormwater issues. And we do have a significant increase of funding in the budget right now that we have received for additional storm drain infrastructure, you know, trying to address some of the failing infrastructures. But this is going to be a huge and growing issue. And I really agree with the focus on this. And I think we're going to have to think a lot bigger. You know, I think particularly in older municipalities or places where development was older, you know, it's a big challenge to modernize that infrastructure. And we certainly see it in Tacoma Park, where I live. You know, it's very expensive. And, you know, I think the municipality is strained to be able to pay for those expenses. And so I think we've got to maybe take a step back and look at the long term and think about what kind of structure works best, you know? Where are the problems most acute? And then what kind of financing is, would be helpful? Because I just think it's enormously costly to get a handle on these issues. And I'm worried about where we're going to be as the storms get more intense and, you know, the deluges have bigger impact. You know, we've got to be able to update that infrastructure so that it can hold that water and prevent it from soaking into the bay. That's all.
Thank you. I just wanted to look at the floor and see if any of my other municipal colleagues have a question on this before we lose.
Dennis.
Monique, I do, I just wanted to follow up and make sure everyone's aware. FEMA is currently redoing all the floodplain maps for Montgomery County. So everyone should be aware that there will be more properties based upon the new floodplain maps in the floodplain. And that's without any changes to any infrastructure. So each of our communities are likely to have new properties that would be required to purchase flood insurance. So you should be aware of that if you're not aware of that. Now, Rockville and Gaithersburg have been collectively working together and somewhat with the county. They have a lot more properties.
Dennis, how are you going about notifying your residents that they would be now in a floodplain?
FEMA will make, will require each municipality to do it. The question is, for those who don't do their own kind of zoning stuff, I'm not sure how the county is approaching that. We will be notifying them directly through a letter. We're still waiting, you know, some of the drawbacks are, we're still waiting on FEMA to kind of finalize the maps, right? And tell us when we can start that process. And honestly, I've worked in other jurisdictions where the county has played a larger role in making sure everybody's working together and having the same language. I know that Rockville and Gaithersburg are working to have the same language in their letters, but I'm not sure if that's going all the way through the county in each of your jurisdictions and how they're going to be handling that for each of you.
I was going to add that in Rockville, we have started surveying people so that a lot of times when there are floods, people will get basement floods and no one knows it happens. It's not necessarily reported. And so we've been encouraging folks to actively report it to us. And in some cases, have a very small reimbursement if they, you know, if there's a need for a claim. And so we're getting more data about where there are problems, where we didn't know before.
And just to be clear, the FEMA maps will all be based on model. So they won't use incidental reporting to base those maps. They're all based on modeling. So it's important that if you had changes in your community, you get the data to FEMA to make sure that they're capturing the new data if there have been changes. I just wanted to make sure that everybody else on the call knew about that.
Excellent. The other issue I wanted to ask you about, and I didn't hear a lot on pedestrian safety just yet. I know the county council has been, you know, you care deeply about that and there's been a number of efforts you undertook and some recent discussions you've had. I think if all of our municipalities do the right thing and our council, your council does the right thing, we're still going to have a major problem with state roads, because that's where the serious crashes are. And I wonder how we can combine our efforts to get some movement, because that's where the deaths and serious, you know, injuries are happening.
So I'll speak at a high level and then turn it over to colleagues to... So I'll speak at a high level and then um uh turn it over to colleagues to just get your thoughts on this too, but um it, it, it remains very much a priority. Uh, you know, there have been fourteen deaths in the last eighteen months uh in Montgomery County from pedestrian fatalities and uh the, the numbers didn't dip during the pandemic. They actually stayed steady. Um, and so it, it is a huge issue on a number of different levels. And I know there has been some funding placed for the Vision Zero initiatives, and we're looking at this through individual master plans much more cautiously than we have been in the past. Um, but I'll yield to colleagues to see what they'd like to add in this space, but um, it is very much an issue. And I, I, the last thing I'll say about this, and, and then I do apologize, I have to jump off. And happy St. Patrick's to everyone. Um, is that, you know, um there was an effort when I worked in the Leggett administration, because disproportionately, a lot of the people impacted by this are in our black and brown communities. Uh, and there are a number of folks in our immigrant communities that even are more disproportionately on top of that. So there was a very robust education campaign uh in a variety of different communities. We actually made some really great strides through the pandemic through an initiative called Poderosa Salud y Bienestar for our health and wellbeing. And we hired sixty-two health promoters that like flooded the zone uh across the entire county. And it was a very community-driven effort. I think this is one of those opportunities where government can only go so far. I mean, we can do a lot in the way of you know, planning streets, uh taking advantage of technology, making sure that we're not contributing to the problems through our own transit systems. But I think there's an opportunity for us to be even more intentional in partnerships and alliances with our community-based organizations and our faith-based organizations. Because everyone has a role and responsibility, government being the primary lead on this, but um, even if we do everything perfectly, um, it, it, it's never going to be perfect. And so I think that we do need sort of a public-private partnership approach to this uh and a lot more community engagement than, than has currently been undertaken. Uh, but I'll yield to colleagues to see what they have to say, and I will turn it over to council member Katz to take us home from here. But thank you all again so much for, for uh joining this evening. Look forward to the continued partnership and friendship.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Enjoy being with your family and the, and the rest of St. Patrick's Day. Um. Gabe is, is done so much of the, of the heavy lifting on what's going on, on, on all these topics. But I, I did want to point out for uh to uh, to Monique's point about us working together, especially for Vision Zero. And I always start out by saying, I don't like the name Vision Zero. I believe we should be solving this with our eyes wide open than with Vision Zero. However, I understand what the name. I, I think it would be to everyone's benefit whenever one of our municipal uh municipalities sends anything to the county. Because, you know, Air Department of Transportation and your council member and, and all council or however you want to work it. But the more that we can communicate together, the, the faster perhaps we can get some of these issues solved. Uh, all of us are, are heartbroken every time uh a tragedy happens or a near tragedy, even when you're about uh, you know, so I think that becomes very important. And, and um, so if we could do that and, and obviously the habit of ready, something is occurring in the municipal uh municipality, whether it be a state highway or whether it be a county road or whether it be a, a, a city road, that we notify you as well as to what we're doing. And, and part of the, what we need to do is we need to be doing the, the repairs quicker. And so that becomes, becomes an issue as well. I don't know if any of my other colleagues want to jump in on this one or?
Sure, I'll, I'll add something and then unfortunately I have to go make dinner uh for the kids. And I've got guitar lessons tonight to get my oldest to. Um, and I apologize. Uh, but I wanted to be here for as much as I could. Uh, as I, I'm sure you know, uh, the state has created this new context-sensitive design tool. And it's supposed to uh essentially allow them to make the kind of changes that we've been asking them to make for a really long time. And conceptually, it's a breakthrough because instead of just resisting and saying that the roads are really always going to prioritize automobile throughput, they're now saying, let's take a closer look at where it is and what the surrounding area needs. Um, you know, we've got to keep driving forward to get more from the state on this. And I agree, partnering would be a, a, that would be a strong approach, you know, the state has just been. As we all know, they view those roads as prioritizing long trips, fast trips over long distances. But our communities are alongside those roads and we need for the design and to be safe for people to cross them. And to some extent, you know, initiatives like getting the funding for Bus Rapid Transit that is now in the budget for the northern part of three fifty-five and on Veers Mill down to Wheaton. We can rebuild those roads and rebuild them as the safer roads that we've designed them to be. But there's going to be an ongoing permanent issue. And we've got to get the, got to make sure the new secretary of transportation is willing to use that context-sensitive tool. And then the next secretary of transportation is willing to use that context-sensitive tool. Because with it, we've seen some unprecedented changes like bike lanes on Old Georgetown Road and things like that, that previously they were never willing to do. So there's been some breakthroughs, but um, you know, I, I love the idea of seeing how we could team up and, and get the state to move faster there.
Great.
Thank you.
Any, anybody else? You know, and the other thing I wanted is um uh, uh, council president about the, the budget. And I, I want to the Montgomery County Police Department budget did not go up, whereas being suggested by the county executives' budget. Is it was, the police department budget did not in percent. I, I think it, it comes out to about four and a half point. We, we've gotten the but Tuesday uh, Tuesday morning, and of course, we went right to council session, so haven't spent a whole lot of time going through the what, what I, I think.
You're going in and out, Sydney. Your internet's going in and it, so you're.
Am I better?
No.
Is, is it working? It, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay, sounds like one of those ads. Thank you, Will. Uh, but with, when uh, Gabe was talking about the police budget was ten percent higher. It's not. It goes, it's about four and a half percent being suggested by the county executive. What, what he was that the um huh, what he was referring to was the salary increase for his, his negotiated worth. That's, that's up about ten percent and that the FOP only. So we'll get through it. We'll get through uh each discussion. But I also wanted to talk about um the whole, i- in parts of the uh county executive suggested budget is that um the, as an example, in, in the jail, he is, he is proposing, which many of us has have proposed as well from the public safety side, um, that we're going to have our, our bakery. Uh, with people being taught how to be bakers again if they're incarcerated. And, and because it is such a, when someone goes to the Montgomery County uh correction facility, they're, they are going to count. Uh, I mean, you know, they can only serve eighteen months if they're in that facility. And for them to come out without a trade, for them to, to uh, to uh, go back to what they're doing, that's not helping anybody. So this type of, of, and, and a bakery is something who can get a job right away once they're taught that. So it's those types of issues that we need to, to uh really take a, a good, deep look at. So I was on the um, on a gang task. It was uh with um Prince George's County, the government. And they about then uh prevention, intervention and suppression that you, you know, to arrest people is not solving our problem. It's solving, there's some people that obviously need to be arrested if they're causing issues, but that's not solving the root of what got us there. And so the prevention and the intervention part are the most important. And I really believe that all of us, that the county as well as the municipality line air arms, our, our limbs, make each other stronger so that we can make certain that our children uh are getting the best uh possible um uh recreation and every other program that we can get. And we, we're, and, and you know, air police departments have done a very good job of working together. Alities that have police departments do a very good job working with the county police department. Need to make certain that not only do our departments work together in police, but that they work together in every other department as well. And, and, and uh and as, as we've, as we've mentioned several times today, I think that the, the, the most valuable first step was, was tax duplication. Do that and, and, and let that spirit grow in, in every way possible. And the only other thing I was going to mention, and I'm going to stop, is the most surprising thing that, that I heard this evening is that Chana Davis Cook has been here for twenty years. It seems like it's been a blink of an eye. I can't believe you're here. I can believe it. I shouldn't say it that twenty years out of guess. Yeah.
I've been with the village twenty and manager now for ten, but yes, it, it has seemed to go by.
Oh, my goodness.
Love her job.
Somehow, somehow she looks exactly the same.
Are you saying that I don't, uh, Will? Is that what you're saying?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thanks, yeah.
Were you done, Sydney?
Yes, I am. Please.
Okay, okay. Uh, well, good, good evening, everybody. I'm, I was going to say I'm the last one left, but I see our colleague, Councilmember Tom Hucker, joined us, so he, I can pass it off to him after. Um, but uh, happy uh St. Patrick's Day. Uh, I do, I have some green behind me here. I'm, I hope that can count, you know, but I don't have any on right now. My kid, my kids have pinched me all day, so when they got home, they pitched me. They all.
My kids do that too.
Yeah, exactly. Um, but it's good to be with you all and it was just really, I've just been enjoying looking at you all on the screen. It's, I, I'm realizing how long it's been since I've seen some of you. Um, and uh, and there's new faces, you know, I was, I see uh Lisa Henderson and Jim McNulty and uh, you know, some of our newly elected uh folks, obviously Monique is, you know, Ashton as well, and uh, you're not, you know, you don't feel like you're new, but you know, but um and because you've been so involved and, you know, and just seeing Tracy and everybody, it's just really nice to see everybody. So I hope to see you all as things are warming up and we're getting out to events. I hope to see you all this spring, summer in person. Um, Barrel and, and Cindy and everyone, Tom, I want to mention everyone. Bridget, I see from my, my office, our offices, we look at each other across the street sometimes. Um, uh, because our offices face each other, but um, a lot has been said and I'm really excited to be on this historic council that has passed the duplication that so many have worked on for so long. Um, and that that is a, you know, going to be put to bed. You know, we're doing a, we're going to have six new colleagues at, at least next, next year, and they are not going to have to deal with this. Um, and uh, and, and so it's, what are we going to talk about at our meetings? We're going to have to figure it out. What else we talk about? But um, no, we have a lot to talk about the issues uh tonight with Vision Zero. Uh, obviously with public safety, with our education system. I'm really excited. I think we're at a unique moment. Um, and this budget is, is, is I think going to allow us to start. I'm very optimistic about the budget uh and the fact that revenues are up. Um, and uh, we have surplus at the state level. We're, we're likely to one of the things that came out of the budget conversation is that we're likely, as the state was written up another one point five billion, we're likely to do even better in the next distribution and get, be getting some more money. Um, and we want to spend it wisely. And I, I, I think the fact that we're keeping our reserves up, the fact that we've managed so well during COVID, but we also know that the people who are hit the hardest, and this was something that stuck with me from the budget briefing earlier this week, um, were the people who are least likely to support our tax base. When you think about that, the people who are hit the hardest, one of the reasons our income tax has been so resilient is because the people who were hit the hardest in COVID are the people who are the least, are the lowest income residents that are least supporting our tax base. Um, which means we have a real responsibility uh and that I think we've answered the call in many ways. But to, we know this recovery is going to have a long tail to it. You know, I was in the White House in two thousand nine when the financial crisis hit. And in many ways, in, in certain communities, for example, in uh the African-American community with housing prices, that tail is still existing. Um, and, and you talk about, if you look at our neighbors in Prince George's County and the like, who are still trying to recover from the, the valuation of homes in that period. So we know that the impact, both the health impact, the economic impact, the mental health impact um, that of these last two years is going to be with us, and we have a lot of work to do. Um, and the good news is, I think in this budget, we're going to be able to make some, take some steps forward. I think the pandemic has had us do things we've never done before. I was just with the group last night. Uh, we were talking about, uh, I remember it was uh just about two years ago, almost to the day that we had our first large uh food distribution at a county facility in Montgomery County's history. People, you know, and I was, I had helped set it up with, I'd called our recreation department. We did it in White Oak in Councilmember Hucker's district. Um, and a couple of days before, there had been a mass distribution at a uh mega mart or at a food place, and it was a disaster. There were people everywhere. It was middle of COVID. There were so many worries. So I got called from the police chief. I got calls from the county executive. What are we going to do? How are we going to set it up? Now we set these up as a matter of course, we know what we're doing. And, and, and it's not necessarily a good thing that they need to happen, but we've strengthened our food system. We've made them less likely. We've signed people up so we know where they are, and so they don't have to come necessarily to a distribution. So it's an example of how we've innovated during this time. And I think there's a lot that we can do um, to support residents and to grow our economy and to keep everyone safe and to recover equitably. Uh, starting with this budget and, and with all the new faces here and, and, and some of the familiar faces. So I'm excited to to get to work with my colleagues. We just had our first in-person session in two years, which is hard to believe. Um, and, and council member Katz and I uh sit next to each other and we affectionately call ourselves the crying council members. Um, and uh, and, and so uh, but we're really excited to work with you all. Um, I love all the municipalities and um, if I can be of any, you know, help, please reach out like many of you have. Um, but there's a lot I think we can accomplish together this year and then going into the following years. So uh, excited about it and uh, great to see everybody.
I, I did want to, and I'm going to call him Tom.
Yes, you got it.
But I did to uh explain about that crying part of uh Member Juwondo's statement. He and I were at an event one. He started talking about various things and I, it was a, a topic that was emotional to me and I got teary-eyed. And of course, Will had to give me a hard time and I got teary-eyed. And about three seconds later, he started to speak and he got teary-eyed. So that's how we've gotten there, our nicknames. I wanted to be clear on that. And with that, we're going to call on the non-crime, Tom Hucker, please.
Oh, don't get me started. Um, great to see you all. Um, I'm sure everything's been said. Uh, and yeah, Councilmember Juwondo made a lot of good points, but I, I just to clarify, I, I'm uh, was in the same budget briefing. I'm sure uh, uh, it's clear to everybody, we met the, the folks uh who not, not politically don't support our tax base, but financially don't contribute that much.
Yes, yes, yes.
Tax base, right. Um, and uh, yeah, no, we've talked for years. You all have been in briefings, I'm sure, about the, you know, sort of fabulous fifty or fabulous one hundred families in Montgomery County that contributed an outsized amount to um, to our tax base and why, you know, why we want to uh make sure they don't move somewhere else and that they are getting the services and, and uh, you know, the sort of level of uh uh attention that, that they need. But anyway, um, yeah, I, I'm sure everything's been said. Uh, it's great to see you. Sorry to be late coming from another event, but uh obviously, I'm, I'm very grateful, as we all are, um, for all of your work on the tax duplication issue, all your leadership. Um, particularly Councilmember uh Katz, Mayor for Life Katz, uh, that we've been, we've been talking about since he and I came on the council together. Um, and it's really glad, you know, great to put this issue uh to bed, all the members of the GO committee. And I was especially proud to sponsor the uh special appropriation, the five million dollars with, with Sydney and, and Gabe and Nancy and um, Andrew and, and everybody else um, to get the thing rolling and then to, to pass two twenty-two to make it permanent. So um, I'm so glad, I know you all are, that we're at this point. Um, it's a reasonable, uh, I think, process to ramp up the, the reimbursement. And um, I know you're going to stay in close touch with us. You all are great self-advocates. Um, and you do vital work for the county and we're all grateful for it. And I'm looking forward to talking about other things besides tax duplication uh like public safety and stormwater and climate and many, many other things, because so much of the work we're doing, I've, I've had a hundred meetings with Sidney Dibala about uh, you know, Tacoma Park's leadership on climate, for example. Um, and, and. Um, and, and how we ought to be, uh, the county ought to be following their lead and stormwater and other things. And Rockville, Gaithersburg, so many other municipalities are really leading on many other issues that we could really learn from Kensington. So um, you know, uh, anyway, I'm, I'm, please reach out at any time uh, about any ways we could be helpful, but any advice you have for us about how we should be improving our budget, improving services to all of our mutual residents and constituents. So anyway, thanks again.
Thank you. And with that, Monique, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Um.
Monique, thanks for your leadership. I should be singling you out. I know everybody worked on this, but you're the quarterback. So thanks, thanks very much. Sorry.
Uh, I, I really appreciate all of you and thank you particularly for the supplemental appropriation. Uh, that is a really nice opportunity for us to do some more projects in our municipalities and make our road safety safer. And for those of us with police who had never been reimbursed for that, it really makes a huge difference. And I'll put my background back up to say thank you again for being the historic council. I did want to uh, ask a question because Councilmember Juanda, you were talking about um, equity, some equity issues, and you were also talking about um, issues that relate to um, you know, the past and what we've learned from COVID. And so one of the things that was a positive is that for the first time, we had higher rates of Latino um, populations getting the COVID vaccine. And it's very rare that we have a situation where we're talking uh, from a positive is usually disparity issue. And so what, what are we going to do to leverage that kind of infrastructure that you built to accomplish that, to do that on more health issues?
Yeah, it's a great question. Um, I can start. I mean, one of the things, another innovation that was required and necessitated, I mean, we were among the first councils people in the state, uh, and I was really on this as well, as well as many of my, all of my colleagues on pushing the governor to actually track the, the, the race and ethnicity and locate of what was happening uh, when we, when COVID started, because that we didn't know that and we didn't, we knew, we knew it was bad, but we didn't know. Um, and then uh, we were also on the leading edge of, with our Department of Health and Human Services of setting up these uh, equity areas and these zip codes where we were tracking like a laser focused and doing specific outreach. And it wasn't fast enough for any of us, but it got better over time. And another thing were these innovations with the uh, Salute Benin East Star that we talked about, uh, the, the Health and Wellness for All. And with the African American Health Program investments that Councilmember Rice and I led, that did um, really dramatically help close the gap uh, for not only testing uh, but also vaccination rates uh, in our communities of color. And those, uh, one of the other things I was very happy to see is that the funding for those initiatives, as well as the, the hubs, the eight regional hubs that have started with food, but expanded to do diapers and a whole range of services, workforce and the like. Those are funded as well. The health initiatives are funded. Uh, and they're uh, going to be continuing to deliver uh, resources and connect with all of our residents in your municipalities, obviously across the county. And one of the things, we just had a meeting yesterday, Craig and I, with um, the uh, African American Health Program. One of the really interesting things that's come out of that was this black physicians network where we've signed up uh, uh, almost, I think almost, almost 50 doctors now across different types of, of doctors that are providing, going to be a direct referral and are working with clients already. Um, and that, that is going to be funded as well. It's a very unique program. I mark my word. I think it's going to be on like 60 minutes at some point or something, going to get some attention. Um, and uh, there's funding for that. Um, and you heard Council President Albernás talk about uh, the um, the work on, on, on expanding healthcare that he's doing. So it, health disparities, building off the, that great innovation is something that we're all laser focused on. Um, you know, I spoke last year uh, in December, December 1st is, is World AIDS Day. And uh, you know, we have some deep disparities. Um, you know, 90% of the HIV cases last year uh, reported in Montgomery County were black women, 90%. Um, and you think about that in a county like ours. And I asked them, checked it three times because I was just so stunned by the number. And, and so we have some serious work and you're also going to see in this budget, more funding for epidemiological staff um, and, and the uh, that with the uh, health department so that we can know where things are and how to target our resources. And that's another, I think, area of collaboration. So there's a lot there. Um, and I think it's something that we can really leverage some of these systems that we've set up during COVID to continue and expand uh, tackling those equity issues.
Thank you. I want to open the floor to see if folks have questions.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to um, say a quick thank you. I realize that this only affects a subset of, of the municipalities, but really do appreciate the council, including municipalities so um, directly in your discussions regarding the PAB and the ACC. It's really been important for our municipal police departments to have a seat at the table in those conversations. And I really, really do appreciate that you have provided an opportunity for that, given us an opportunity for feedback and to be a part um, of those very, very important deliberations. So um, having a municipal representative also now on the PAB is so important. And I just wanted to say a thank you um, for that as well.
And, and there again, that's another, and, and not that that has passed yet, but, but it will pass because the council is working as a committee of the whole to, to get it done. But, but that was one of those issues that the state worked on and required for the first time that I can ever remember, the municipal police forces to be under the, under this type of legislation, under that we would all be, the counties and each municipality would be on the, on this board and the, on the ACC as well. And, and oh, it, it's, you know, that's easier said than done because each municipality has their own set of rules. Uh, so you know, we need to, to try to get this done. And oh, by the way, we have to have it up and running by I mean, so we have no time to and, and we're trying our best to, to, we still have to advertise, we still have to do all of this work. And that's why we're doing it as the committee of the whole. We had three public safety committee meetings on it. Realize that we were going to run out of time. I mean, as we were trying to get there, but, but to your, your point, municipalities will be, have a, have a designated seat at uh, board, uh, police advisory board so that, that we can do our best to make certain that the, when someone has an issue that they will be and eventually regardless of where they're, where their uh, playing game from.
Thank you, Councilmember Katz. I was just gonna say thank you for being uh, someone who has the municipal perspective in your many, many years on this issue, but also on tax duplication. Uh, we know that you, you know what we are going through. Uh, so thank you for always bringing that voice to the table.
Thank you.
I know I'm standing in between St. Patrick's Day and uh, March Madness. There are brackets posted on my, we're a big basketball house.
Bridgette's hand is up. I don't know if you can.
Wanted to, um, I have one more question, but uh, Mayor Newton, please go ahead.
Uh, thanks. And um, I don't really have a question. I just wanted to follow up on the positive comments about working together. Because, and hi Tom and hi Will, good to see you both. I think that what we all showed with tax dup was that we can get this done. And as we talk about pedestrian safety and um, flood management and those things, the county, you know, our residents, as we all know, our county residents as well. So let's have our people work together to solve these problems so that we're not duplicating. And I say that with all due respect, but I know that we can all get a little ahead of ourselves sometimes. So I just want to say how much I think it would be really beneficial. And I'm trying to follow on Shayna's comments about just let's partner up on these things and we can do a lot more, a lot quicker, and then save money in the same time. Because we don't need to spend it twice. We can spend it once and get it done right. So that's all I wanted to say was thank you all very much. And let's just, these, these are big ticket items, um, both life, safety wise and financially for all of us. So I just want to work together with you all. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll make a comment and then ask a question. One comment I want to make is um, during uh, the height of COVID, we really worked with uh, the county staff and you're in leadership to meet regularly, plan regularly. We participated, 15 municipalities joined in helping to hand out tests um, and masks. And even just the communication that was happening on a bi-weekly sometimes, sometimes weekly, and at times when things got better monthly basis. Um, really helped us to see the relationship, I think, and the conversation. And as we move out of COVID, hopefully forever, um, I would like to see how we can um, find ways to have more regular conversations. The annual engagement is fantastic, but it's the regular conversations that build relationships that will help us to tackle many of the problems we talked about this evening. Um, my last question was uh, relating to um, if there's anything you want to share on economic development and affordable housing, both are very, very important um, to being able to do all the things that we need to do uh, and have a thriving economy. But also to make sure that residents don't feel like they have to move out of the area, that there's affordable place for them to live.
So Will, did you want to, being on, you're on Fed, right?
Sure, yes. I'm happy to take a crack. That's a big one for the last one there, Monique. But um, but I'm, but I'm happy to just uh, offer a couple of thoughts. Um, uh, you know, one, we have to have, and I'll start with something that happened yesterday and then back my way into something. I'll, I'll be brief. You know, uh, Councilmember Reamer and I, along with Councilmember Fritzen, the Fed Committee, the, which economic development, but obviously all my colleagues, we all care about this and, and have all done work in this area. Uh, yesterday we announced a set of special appropriations to support uh, black businesses in particular, and women owned and minority owned businesses. Um, like the seating, uh, the, the, some funding for the development of a CDFI, uh, supporting the black, the state Maryland Black Chamber of Commerce, the Black Collective, which is formed in the county. Um, and the county executive talking about working together has uh, sent over continued funding for this, these efforts in his budget, which was a really good uh, thing. And you know, I worked really hard. I said, it's, you know, it's one thing to give them a little bit money, but we have to have continued efforts and that are consistent and connected. Um, and I think if you look at um, the small businesses in our community, uh, last year I did uh, an effort where I highlighted a business in the community and, and I'm sure I made it to every municipality. Um, you know, every week, uh, we called it our community, our businesses. So we did 52 uh, throughout the year. And as you know, we have such a diverse and strong array of businesses in so many fields. Um, but you know, they were hit hard uh, during the pandemic, many of them. And, and a lot of them were our small businesses, our businesses of color, women owned businesses. Um, and I'm proud that this council stepped up and provided record amounts of relief to many sectors and to general businesses. I sponsored a program to help with rental relief, uh, which we're going to probably give some more money to for storefront businesses that uh, are, are, are smaller businesses that, that's a big cost for them. And so we found a lot of ways to help, but we know people were hit hard. So we want to make sure we support people uh, through our incubator programs, through our funding. Um, to make sure through entrepreneurship uh, support that people can actually recover and then expand and grow. And that's a big part of our strategy. And uh, I think particularly in an equitable way as well, because we know as with everything, things were, you know, um, the losses were inequitable. And there was one study that I, I cite quite often. Uh, between February and uh, April of 2020, right in the throes of the pandemic. There was a, a survey that's uh, national survey that said that 40% of black businesses closed were, you know, closed down um, nationwide. And, and we have a study going on by OLO right now that I commissioned uh, to look at uh, all of our businesses, to get a demographics and a uh, uh, of all of our businesses, where they are, what they, what they do, who the owns them sector, because we really haven't had a really good handle on that. We know some information. Um, and so that we can help support and target those resources and, and coordination as well. So I'll just talk about that piece of economic development. There's a ton that we could talk about. I'll, I'll let others maybe talk about uh, housing and, and the like, but thrive and uh, the implementation of thrive is going to be big uh, and, and on the housing front. Um, but there's a ton to do. So I'm going to pause there because I could, we could talk about it all night, but those, those are some specifics.
Thank you. And I did want to point out for those of you who might not, you talk about CDFIs. And, and we in government use initials rather than explain what, what we mean because we talk about them. But, but a CDFI is a Community Development Financial Institution. It, it really is a privately owned bank that, that uh, that promotes financial um, inclusion and economic development in, in poorer areas. Uh, so that is uh, that is what we are working on, looking at uh, funding. And one of the other things I wanted to point out that when we talk about the budget, we did get it on Tuesday, but in the county, unlike the state, in the county, the county executive sends a recommended is, is suggested, I always call it a suggested budget. We can, you know, we can uh, make it, change it any way we want. We have to figure out how to pay for it, but we can change it any way we want. And so we will go through it literally line item by line item after I think five uh, different uh, public hearings. Uh, and, and have it go through committee work, et cetera, to, to get us to, so that we can pay us the air budget. Um, and um, you know, earlier than, than June 30th, because it's, it takes effect July 1. So we're, we're in the process. We need, we need your assistance on that as well. Any, anything else, Monique, please?
No, thank you. Uh, I will just say that some of the biggest CDFIs are in the DMV area, but giving a lot of money across the country. And it'll be awesome to bring them all together to see if they might be around table with some focus on the areas in, in Montgomery County. Um, I will just end and say a huge thank you for your time this evening. Thank you for all the work that you're doing for our county, the work that you're doing in collaboration with our municipalities. And again, thank you for being the historic council that solved tax duplication. We really appreciate all of you.
Well, we appreciate the historic council, but this is the historic Maryland Municipal
That's right.
Council chapter. And believe me, I've been there. So we, we really do appreciate everybody doing this. It took all of us. It literally took a village and the towns and cities to do this. So thank you very much.
All right.
Thanks, everybody.
And I'll just note for our chapter, we'll be signing into our Zoom link for the remainder of our business meeting. We'll be brief.
Very good. Good night. Enjoy St. Patrick's Day.
Thank you.
Councilmembers.